Call Alexandria City Council, meeting to order. We have the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Reverend Banks, would you do us the honor of the invocation? And Mr. Lawson, would you please, please?
Let us bow our heads. Eternal God, we thank you for this day. We pray as this council and this mayor begin its business for today. Be with them, lead and guide them, provoke that thinking they might do things that'll be pleasing in their sight. We thank you for that leadership. We pray that as they go forth, they will think about the city, not of themselves, but those who stand in need. Bless our coming and our deliberation in Jesus' name we pray.
So I'm in the pledge, our pledge of allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with which he does all. Mr. Sturges, can we do the roll call?
Mr. Lawson.
Pardon me.
Mr. Fowler.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
President.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Silver.
President.
Mr. Hobbs.
Here.
Mr. Marshall.
Here.
Mr. President, you have a quorum.
Next item on the agenda, if you should, is the consent calendar.
Mr. President, item number two. There was no bids received this afternoon on this item, so the administration would like to request re-advertising for bids.
You want it delayed or?
Re-advertising.
No, we just adopted a resolution to re-advertise for bids.
Move.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Fowler, second by Mr. Hobbs. What's your pleasure?
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aha.
Hold. Motion passed. Anything else? Uh, items three, uh, and ten, your utilities. Number sixteen, utility. Anything else? Move. Moved by Mr. Fowler, second by Mr. Hobbs. All in favor?
Aye.
Hold.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Move to item G. Ordinance for final adoption, subject to public hearing.
Number twenty-four, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept the low bid submitted for the purchase of six police motorcycles with trade-in for the Alexandria Police Department.
Number, Mr. Fowler, second by Mr., uh... Discussion. All approved, all in favor?
Aye.
Hold. Motion carries.
Number twenty-five, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept the low bid submitted for one minivan for the lab testing department.
Move, second. Moved by Mr. Fowler, second by Mr. Johnson. All, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Hold. Motion carries.
Twenty-six, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the establishment of a fifty-foot wide temporary construction servitude in lot six of square one of the subdivision of lots eleven, twelve, fourteen, fifteen, and part of lots D and E of lot thirteen of Willow Glen Plantation.
Moved by Mr. Fowler, second by Mr. Johnson. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Hold. Motion carries.
Number twenty-seven, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing acceptance of a twelve-point-five-oh-foot drainage servitude located in lot B of Acadian Gardens subdivision on property owned by LHB Investments.
Move by Mr. Fowler, second. Second by Mr. Johnson. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Hold. Motion carries.
Number twenty-eight, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing supplemental agreement number one to Culpeper Road Drainage Improvements, Luella Drive towards Sturks Road, for additional work to complete this project.
Second. Moved by Mr. Fowler, second by Mr. Lawson. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Number twenty-nine, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept the quote received for handheld equipment for a twelve-month period.
Second. Moved by Mr. Hobbs, second by Mr. Fowler. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Hold. Motion carries.
Number thirty, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept the donation from the Humane Society of the United States to further the mission of after Katrina, improving the lives of Gulf Coast dogs and cats.
Moved by Mr. Fowler, second by Mr. Johnson. All, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Hold. Motion carries.
Number thirty-one, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a grant agreement with the Shepherd Center of Central Louisiana for the operation of a homeless emergency shelter and a homeless prevention program.
Moved by Mr. Fowler, second by Mr. Hobbs. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Hold. Motion carries.
Number thirty-two, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to purchase one dual-broom vacuum street sweeper with Covington Environmental Company to piggyback off the city of Bossier City's bid proposal number S-1307 in accordance with Louisiana Revise Statute thirty-nine, seventeen-oh-one to seventeen-oh-nine.
Moved by Mr. Ha- uh, Fowler, second by Mr. Hobbs. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Hold. Motion carries.
Number thirty-three, to consider final adoption of an ordinance amending the budget for Lincoln Road Street and drainage improvements for Hudson Boulevard to Sugar House Road project.
Moved by Mr. Fowler, second by Mr. Silver. Discussion. Discussion. Mr. Howard.
Yeah, just briefly here, uh, so I can be on the same page as the council and administration. Uh, just needs a little clarification about exactly what's gonna happen to Lincoln Road and Hudson.
You said state your name and address.
Lou Howard, eight oh-one Hudson Boulevard. Uh, just for clarification, and just like to know, get on the same page, the council and administration, about exactly, before we finalize, exactly what's gonna happen on Lincoln Road, Sugar House Road, and Hudson. Just a little clarification.
We're digging a big ditch between your house and the street.
Well, thank you. As long as the driveway's good, as long as the water get away. But, uh, can anybody, uh, explain a little bit about that?
On Lincoln Road, this is to provide drainage, street and drainage improvements from Hudson Boulevard to Sugar House Road. Drainage and street. We've already done the other thing, we came from Willow Glen River Road to Hudson. Now we're gonna continue on, go to Sugar House, from Hudson. No, that's on Lincoln.
They're not going down Hudson, not Sugar House.
This isn't a big project.
This is just dirt for your driveways.
Is that what you needed to know?
All in favor?
Aye.
Hold. Motion passed.
Number thirty-four, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a professional services agreement with EPZ, Emergency Preparedness Consultants, for emergency consulting services.
Moved by Mr. Johnson.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hobbs. Discussion.
It was heard and leaded and recommended.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hold.
Number thirty-five, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Bonnet Auction Company for professional auctioneering services to be used on a as-needed basis.
The administration amended, recommended amendment that include, uh, morrow coming.
Bubba more.
LLC. Ruling amendment. As recommended by the administration.
Second, Mr. Fowler. All in favor?
Aye.
Only amended.
Only amended, right.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Any opposed?
Okay.
And now we go with the original.
As amended.
As amended. Go. All in favor?
Aye.
We got it, yeah. Fowler, Hobbs.
Hold. Passes.
Okay. Number thirty-six, to consider final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Fire Union Local five forty.
Moved first by Fowler, second by Mr. Johnson. Most, uh, discussion.
Yes, sir. Mr. Marshall, for the clarification, uh, I was not able to be here for the committee meeting. I wanted to advise the council that presents its instructions. Mr. Hamilton has reviewed the contract, did get back with us some additional language. Uh, Mr. Virture and Mr. Goche with the union executive committee have met with the administration on more than one occasion. Uh, the administration and Mr. Virture recommend that at this point the council go forward to authorize the contract, is that correct? And they, the mayor will meet with Mr. Virture after he talks with his executive committee.
A copy of the contract was placed on the bill, I was gonna hand it to somebody.
Any other questions?
Anybody got any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion by Mr. Fowler, second by Mr. Johnson.
Oppose. Motion carries. Okay, we got it.
Very good, that was true.
Okay.
Need to open a public hearing.
Open public hearing, of course, community development.
Number thirty-seven, to continue public hearing on structures located at five-ten Fourteenth Street, Charlie Gilmore, and twenty-seven oh-three Main Street, Arthur Smash and James Smash.
Oh, man, that would come in development. I have two recommendations on the properties, uh...
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Five-ten Fourteenth Street. Like to continue until March eleven-oh-eight.
Second.
And then twenty-seven oh-three Main, like to continue until January fifteenth, for the honor to finish the rehab.
Moved by Mr. Fowler, second by Mr.
Hobbs.
That's the club.
Discussion.
No, sir, that's just for one. What is that? No, that's the club. Well, Main? That is a club? Well, they know, that's just for the, uh, club. That's not for the house. They planned, they planned to rehab both structures, you know? Yes. That's why we give them a short time to get to work on it. We're giving them until January fifteenth. They supposed to already have the bids on, uh, from contractors and just send to put the file in them to try to... Contractor, uh, he was tatted on the job, but now he's supposed to be starting on it. That's what she told me. Yeah, well, that's the last I heard.
Oh, if you think they need to have the necessary contracts in place for us to continue it again.
Right, right.
And progress.
Yeah, progress, for sure. Yeah. All to handle.
Okay, well. No, if you pay.
They knew, told each other.
Public year is not close.
Nancy.
Sir.
It's on you.
Okay. Since, since this item's not on the agenda and it was not discussed, the committee need a motion and second to add it on the agenda. It's a resolution endorsing and commanding Alexandria's Fire Chief Bernard Wesley on his appointment to the office.
Move.
Second.
Does it have to be unanimous?
All in favor?
Now you need a motion. Now you need a motion and a second to approve the resolution.
Mr. Fowler, not Hobbs.
Okay. All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Hold. Your house might burn down.
Okay. What'd it say? Committee. Committees.
The commission would need to be added first by the council, it's not coming out of committee.
You going to committees?
Yeah.
Okay. Finance committee, Mr. Lawson.
I recognize, uh, Mr. Sassa. Wanted, fourth, uh, our financial. Statement, how did it say?
Uh, Mr. President, members of council and the mayor, uh, in accordance with the city charter, we're here to officially present the audit report for fiscal year in April thirtieth, two thousand and seven. We, of course, heard it earlier in finance committee, and, um, this is simply to meet the requirements of the city charter. Just a couple of statements. The, the opinion that we, our firm issued on the financial statements is an unqualified opinion, a clean opinion. Uh, the results of operations of utility system and the general fund, the two major funds are quite well for the prior year. And, um, there were, I think, a total of nine findings in the report, which we discussed earlier. So, just want to express my appreciation to members of management for their help in, in getting through this thing another year, getting presented. Uh, we have filed with the legislative auditor, we'll file a copy with the, uh, National Clearinghouse for single audits. And, uh, as of course, the report is a matter of public record, anyone can go to legislative auditor's website and, and get a copy of it. So, thank you, sir.
Okay.
Moved by Mr. Silver and second by Mr. Hobbs to accept the audit report. All in favor?
Aye.
Hold.
Thank you, Mr. Sassa.
Thank you.
House of Arts Committee, Mr. Silver. Legal Committee, Mr. Hobbs.
Resolution confirming the permit of Michael P. Boardlaw to serve Alexandria Housing Authority Board as a commissioner.
Move. Moved by Mr. Fowler, second by Mr. Silver. All in favor?
Aye.
Hold. Motion carries.
And then I have an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a favorable franchise and poll use agreement with, uh, Seabridge Acquisition LP, Southern Leaks Communication, and to authorize the mayor to negotiate a contract and to see terms favorable to the city of Alexandria that, that in his discretion are necessary.
Move.
Sorry.
All in favor?
Economic Committee, Mr. Johnson.
Norbord.
Community Development, Mr. Hobbs. Personnel Insurance, Mr. Johnson.
Norbord.
Public Safety Transportation, Mr. Johnson.
Norbord.
Annual Review, Mr. Silver.
Nothing.
Economic Development, Mr. Lawson.
Let's have an ordinance and a resolution, uh, versus an ordinance, uh, authorizing the city of Alexandria to enter into a written endeavor agreement with the interim nomination of Area WAC Crusade to support community events to be held January eighteenth through the twenty-first, two thousand and eight, for the purpose of recognizing national holiday MLK, day of service that encourages all citizens to come together and strengthen communities, alleviate poverty, and acknowledge dignity and respect for all human beings. Move. We got a resolution on the economic development, which is a resolution providing for free or reduced rate, uh, for bus service during the holiday period until one week after, that should be New Year, isn't that, Chris?
Move.
Move. Second.
Resolution, all in favor?
Aye.
Hold. Motion carries.
Aaron, swallow it twice, he didn't.
Any other business? I think we got, uh, Reverend Banks.
Yes.
Come to the podium, please.
I'm here to appeal to this council and the mayor to do a feasibility study on the cost of utilities in this city. Our utilities are excessive high. I run the Hope Development Center, and most times my utilities run from eighteen-hundred to twenty-three-hundred dollars a month. I think that's high. I believe with the excess money that we have, and especially with senior citizens, we haven't had a lot of cold weather, but we need to do something about our utilities. The poor people cannot hardly survive. Some of them have had their utilities cut off already, so I'm asking this city council to do something for the poor. That is old saying that says, "He who hears about the crowd, the poor, will soon one day cry and not be heard." Thank you.
I read the paper today about something being done to help address this very thing by having a commission of some sort, I haven't heard brought up tonight, is that news?
We've, we've sent it, we discussed it previously weeks ago, but sent a letter December seventeenth outlining the structure of a commission that would address, uh, the concerns of Reverend Banks. We also have a letter of December eighteen today that, uh, nominates the membership. It's all been done in accord with the charter, the, uh, we would ask that the, uh, the council, under item number forty-seven, vote unanimously to add that item to the agenda and pass, uh, a resolution, uh, adoption of these letters, and it will, we place in the form of the resolution. Uh, we, if you look at the December seventeen letter, uh, we have everything, things set forth, but until the council passes it to add it, I, I won't discuss it further. If the council will do that, we can discuss. The resolution is, uh...
Was the letter included in?
With the letter. I, I sent a letter, uh, before the deadline, asking that it be added to the agenda. It was never added to the agenda. So now I've sent a letter, uh, seeking to form the mayoral commission, uh, and it outlines everything in great amount of detail. Uh, and then there's also a, uh, a letter of proposed nominations included in that package, were resumes for each nominee.
There was a resumes included? I didn't get the resume, I remember getting the letter.
I read it quite good today and today. There was resume set forth, there's qualifications, there's not appointments, and if we're trying to do something on addressing that problem...
Why don't, why don't we add it instead of utilities? If, if, was the letter received prior to the deadline?
I think it's put in everybody's mailbox, huh?
It was received this afternoon, and it was put in your mailbox, and it's all on the back of your...
We'd, we'd like to... We've had some discussions about this, including, uh, during, I get the impression there's some degree of surprise, and, uh, I just don't think there's any surprise, the, the formation, uh, the membership, all of these things have, there's no surprises here, it's all been outlined. If the council don't want to have a commission, the mayor has the right to form a commission, and the council has the right to confirm or not confirm the members. Uh, if we can, if they're not gonna be confirmed, I guess that's one thing, but, uh...
I don't, I don't know who they are, I don't have a problem with the commission.
Yes, if, if it's moved to be added, we can talk about it, and then the council...
And second, be added, okay, so we...
Is it, is it unanimous? There's a motion, motion by Mr. Smith, the second by Mr. Silver.
All in favor?
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, carries.
Aye.
Now it's open for the, would you want to discuss it?
Right.
The, the nature of the commission would be to study in comprehensive fashion all aspects of the city of Alexandria's several utility departments. This would include electric, water, gas, and sewer, and to make recommendations for rate reform, implementation of best practices, address of privatization issues if there are any, and further to provide interim oversight as may be from time to time needed. Uh, and again, this is a, uh, Charter seven-dash-ten Board and Commission. It has no authority to, uh, take over any legislative oversight of this body. Uh, indeed, it can only provide recommendations, uh, consistent with, uh, the administration of this body's, uh, strictures. It would also be to study in comprehensive fashion all aspects of settlement opportunities and the litigation titled City of Alexandria versus Cleco Corporation, and to make recommendations to the public and city council with regard to any frameworks for resolution of that litigation, of which you have been made aware, an executive council, about those various frameworks. And also to make recommendations and consider best community opportunities for long-term sustainability of our utility infrastructure, which also, in conjunction with those executive council meetings, there have been discussions about infrastructure needs. Also, thirdly, to rank the desirability of all such best community opportunities and options, as well as consider any exclusions of options, and give written reasons therefore, in an initial or final report, to be published for public dissemination, uh, or, uh, by twelve-thirty-one-oh-seven. And/or to provide written reasons why such a report cannot be compiled, but in any event, to make a public report that states where they are, that report would include... Uh, that report would include appointment of the seventh member, which we'll, uh, talk about, and the things that, uh, these commissioners can look at in that amount of time, which is considerable, given the preparation that we, uh, have in mind and could present to them over the next two weeks. Uh, the nominations were provided by a separate cover letter from this December seventeen letter. It, uh, states the structure of the committee, and it states that we know of no conflicts with any members. One of the proposed members is Janice C. Strunk, who serves, uh, at the, uh, who is the Executive Director of Shepherd Center. And, uh, that was in specific response, Mr. Lawson, to you talking about, uh, having someone serve, uh, the needs of our indigent community. Uh, I bring, I highlight her now, before we get to the other members, to point out that she does have a contract with the city, but only through the Shepherd Center to administer a needy plan, uh, and in that role, there is no issue, in our opinion legally, with a conflict, because she derives no income in any way from that, and would be actually a very appropriate person to serve. Uh, so that's the membership structure. The members were, uh, Mr. John D. Scott, who has a Bachelor of Science in Engineering. He's an Alexandria resident and former Chief Dispersing Officer for the United States Treasury. Indeed, some people, when you receive checks from the US Treasury, his name might have been stamped on there. Takes a lot to get the clearance to do that for the United States government. His responsibility and clearance level included collecting five hundred million in government debt. He was a, he retained a senior government status until his retirement, and he was a project manager for Y2K issues. He's currently retired and living in Alexandria, uh, and is a small business developer and community leader. The next nominee is Professor Robert P. Bush. I submitted to the Chancellor of LSU to give names, uh, gave no indication of who it should be, just somebody that either had an econ- uh, economics or business background. I was submitted several names, had further discussions with people. Uh, Professor Bush is the new endowed and only endowed Chair of Business at LSU-A. He's a published author, his resume speaks for itself, as does Mr. Scott's. Third member is Mrs. F. Janice C. Strunk, ma- Master of Science, Bachelor of Science, an Alexandria resident and the Executive Director of the Shepherd Center, which has as part of its mission the fiscal responsibility and administration of a cooperative endeavor agreement with the city for the provision of utility relief aid to the needy. She has a Master of Sciences degree in rehabilitation counseling, with a focus on grantsmanship on multiple levels. The fourth member would be Doctor, or the fourth nominee would be Dr. B. David Brooks, uh, Doctor of Ministry in Divinity, Masters as well, and a Bachelor of Arts. Uh, he's pastor of Calvary Baptist Church in Alexandria, Louisiana, and represents a large-needs utility consumer. He has one of the biggest church facilities in the area, and, uh, is an insightful, committed community leader. Uh, the fifth member would be the Honorable Charles Frederick Smith, the former Chair of the Legal Committee and longtime President of the Council, who has participated in utility meetings and possesses information relevant to the issues at hand. Mr. Smith served under the Commission form of government before the Home Rule Charter in direct assistance to the Utility Commissioner, and came up through the ranks within the utilities, uh, structure within the city. He possesses unique knowledge of the changes within our system for about a twenty-year period of time. Sixth member would be the Honorable Charles Chuck Fowler, the former Utility Chairman, who likewise has demonstrated commitment to the utility issues at hand. Uh, Mr. Fowler has, from the time of these issues, uh, constantly remained in contact on his own, had meetings, followed up with things from the KPMG report to everything else on his own, and demonstrated his commitment to these issues. Finally, the seventh member would be appointed by the mayor and submitted to you for confirmation, but only after, uh, names would be given by the commissioners. In other words, we would, uh, be looking at who they think should be their expert, uh, leader. That would not stop them from going on ahead and taking information now, because they can do that, but ultimately, beginning in next year, there would be a seventh member, subject to confirmation by you, who the commissioner, uh, the commissioners would put forth a name, uh, and I think we would probably utilize RW Beck in getting some help. That person might not live in Alexandria, it might be good not to have them be from here, who would be in, of an expert nature, who could help with some of the expert issues. In compliance, gentlemen, with the Alexandria Home Rule Charter, section seven ten, uh, paragraph A, these appointments reflect the social, economic, and racial composition of the city of Alexandria. And we believe that, at the same time, they clearly achieve nomination of the best and brightest of our citizenry, and we accomplish a real blue ribbon coalition of interest to tackle one of the most serious questions our city will face in the next decade. And to quote, uh, our city attorney, we've often talked about it, and he told me one day that, uh, probably, other than the, uh, Valley case and its implications for us for desegregation and so forth, this is probably one of the bigger cases that'll ever happen in rapids, because of what it means to so many citizens at one time. And we would ask that you entertain, uh, by resolution passing these members tonight. Uh, none of the members here, uh, were in any way political choices. Indeed, some of them came only from other people. I knew Ms. C. Strunk before, I've only gotten to know Pastor Brooks in the last few years. Uh, all of these folks, none of them were campaign contributors to me. This represents an attempt at achieving a real blue ribbon status, and I hold them up to the scrutiny of the community and this council, and anyone else to challenge that. I think it's the best thing we can achieve, uh, in getting, uh, a group. And the reason it's seven members instead of fifteen or twenty is because these issues require immediate address, and if you have a group that large, I think it would be watered down and we couldn't get anything done. I've also spoken to President Marshall that this committee would sunset at a certain point, uh, next year. Sometime after the first quarter, maybe the second quarter. The information it compiles would be given only to you, and then to the longer-term, Mr. Marshall, Infrastructure Committee, that will include lots of folks and a much broader sweep of the city, both in its composition and membership, and in what it addresses and scope. And so with that, I would submit and, and really, uh, implore you to do this tonight, and I think it's in the best interest of the citizens, and it is not at all political, and will help us, uh, to, to tackle, uh, these important issues.
I would like to, uh, move our resolution that we support Mr. Utility Commission as presented by the mayor, and that we move forward.
Second by Miss, most, by Mr. Johnson, second by Mr. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution passes.
I just have a question, I want, because I'm, I'm in support, actually. We talked about that four months ago, I think, about needing commission, uh, on utilities, but where are we with the federal judge, uh, and the, I guess, the gag order? To be able to share information with them, uh, did he, uh, allow that, or did, uh, uh, Cleco allow it as well?
Because I know we... We would, before they would be presented with it, very good question, and, and it needs to be answered very clearly. Uh, the commission obviously has a broader scope and can do a lot of things that are not subject to that at all. That's number one. Number two, we would like them to look at some of those things. They would be subject to the same, uh, items that you sign to be able to do that, and we would only do it after, uh, discussions with Cleco, and ultimately by approval of the judge. I can't speak for the judge, except to say that I believe that, uh, that this would be an approved item, assuming that we can work it out with the other par in the litigation. We have several people that are employed on the staff and all of you that are subject to the knowledge of that. In fact, two of the members would already be subject, uh, to, to that order. We also believe, though, it's important that the commission be able to look at other things, uh, from rate reform to everything else, and so it wouldn't affect that, Mr. Lawson. I believe if they signed that agreement, they can hear an executive session, any of the items about the case, and still come out, be compiling a report that would ultimately be, uh, presented to the public. And I think the public expects that.
Which is my second question, of course, it would be a public, uh, all their meetings would be subject to the public meetings.
All their meetings would be published, just like, uh...
But they would be afforded the opportunity to go into executive session as well.
And that's in the structure of the, uh, December seventeen letter, yes. They can, no member could be compelled by anyone to do anything absent the federal judge with regard to that, and we have things in place to protect that. But we still believe community members should be involved in this very awesome decision that all of us, and particularly you, with your vote, will have to make at some point in the future.
Anything else before the council?
Say Merry Christmas to everybody.
Yeah.
Um, I have, one last, it's kind of a Merry Christmas thing. Uh, I just wanted to, uh, I wanted to wish everybody Merry Christmas, first of all, and Happy New Year and Happy Holidays. Uh, no, not everybody celebrates Christmas, we wish everybody, uh, a great holiday season at this point. Uh, forgive me, I'll say Merry Christmas, so.
I agree.
Didn't matter what you did back there.
Harry and I talk about this all the time, but I do want to say this, in, in addition to the holiday season coming up. Uh, we, we talked about, did we take care of Beno- yeah, you already passed Beno. I also want to highlight Mr. Ronnie Jones, who is here, and tell you that, uh, he has achieved a master's degree. He's been working on while he's been employed full-time, uh, running the department. Oh, I'm sorry, bachelor's. You shouldn't have said anything, you would have been better.
Make sure you articulate bachelor's correctly, because Harriet uses that.
But, and, and I would like to commend him, because it's very hard to go get a four-year degree while you're, uh, working full-time as a department head. This has been something he's worked on, and I, I just think it's a tremendous thing, and we promote it and wish, uh, more employees would seek that out, and so, congratulations.
He told you master's degree for pay reasons, right? I wanted to, uh, come, uh, and again, congratulations to the chief, but I wanted him to get up here and say something that we have to be aware of, and I think we ought to, uh, make sure the citizens are, the dangers, uh, that, uh, are around us in homes, uh, this time of year with fires. I think our fire department offers a service, and I think the elderly in particular ought to know about it, and actually say something about it, chief.
But one thing I want everybody to know, just, um, this time of year, you got to be careful. Candles, space heaters, yes. Christmas lights. You put me on the spot here.
He's cutting my house propane burners.
Everybody knows I'm not a public speaker, but of course, um, you know, but I am very sincere about fire safety. So, Christmas lights, electricity, candles, space heaters, things like that, just be very careful.
What about fire detectors, do we still...
Smoke detectors, yes.
Yes.
Smoke detectors, that's, that's my, that's my pet peeve. Smoke detectors are early warning device. Those things you need to have, because, I mean, every time we go to, to a house fire where, where people outside crying about their house, about they, they lost everything, except their life, they complain about their smoke detector, how it scared them to death, and they got out the house safely, so. Check the batteries.
Do we provide a service to install, that's what I'm, I'm asking.
Oh, 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 oh.
That's what I wanted you to say.
Yes, 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 yes.
Give him your chance. He want me to get up there and say that.
The Alexandria Fire Department people, the Alexandria Fire Department has a, has a free smoke detector program that we will come out and install the smoke detector in your home. So if anyone has a, if anyone, know of anyone who needs a smoke detector, yes, sir.
I'm gonna pull your man out of there.
It's free, it's free. Yes, but, but we do, we have a, we have a free smoke detector program.
Harry wants one for each room in his house.
Each room, what, a hundred?
Get them and sell them.
But, um, um, I talked with Councilman, um, Lawson, and he said that I need to announce this to the public, let everyone know that if you know, if you, if you need a smoke detector or know of anyone who needs one, that the Alexandria Fire Department does have a, uh, smoke detector program. And if you call us, um, you can just look in, look in the book and call any number in the Fire Department, just, just look for Fire Department, and call and ask about the smoke detector program, and give us the name of the person, address, or have them to call us, and we will come out and we will install the smoke detector for free.
And it, uh, to, to add to it, it also lowers your insurance prices, so it's some added value in it as well.
Is that a plug?
It has a plug. Insurance is state farm.
So, still...
But we lost, we, we had some tragedies last year, and I think, uh, we certainly don't want to see that again this year. So, uh, I would like to see the churches announce it, and the neighborhood groups also announce that, uh, the city provides this program.
I have a question for, for the chief. Uh, we're talking about the smoke detectors. Do you know if it's mandatory that rental properties have smoke detectors in all their rental properties?
Yes, smoke detectors are mandatory, and, but only, the only thing that, that, that we, um, enforce is triplex and above.
For a single residence, it's a rental property?
That's, that's up, no, no, ma'am. I mean, but they should, they should have them, though. They should have them, but we only enforce triplex and above.
And there's an ordinance from the city or something like that?
I think, I think it, it's, it's there, they, just because of manpower, they don't enforce anything above that. It's still mandatory, so if you know of people violating it, uh, Sandra, you can tell us about it.
I want to know if it's, if it's, if it's law.
It is, it is law.
It is. Smoke detectors and fire extinguishers.
And like you said, changing the batteries, that's what...
It is law, just the amount of people that rent, it would be, we couldn't, we don't have the manpower to go out and enforce it.
Well, the batteries should be...
Unless we know about it.
Yeah, the battery should be changed at least once a year, but, but we recommend twice a year. Anytime you change the clocks, change the clocks, spring forward or fall back, change the batteries in your smoke detectors, test them every month and make sure they're working.
I'm assuming you have some people in mind, maybe you should like to share that, off the record.
What was that? Anyway, do call us, thank you.
Congratulations again.
I tell you one thing, when you get wound up, you do pretty well.
And on behalf of, uh, my colleagues here on the council, I...
And your constituents.
And my constituents. I'd like to wish, um, as along with the administration, everyone a happy holiday season. Happy Hanukkah. Kalakris Tuana.
What are you calling?
Feliz Navidad.